Good morning. Welcome to the June 24, 2024, meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. Happy Birthday, America. America, America. God shed His grace on thee and crown thy good with brotherhood from sea to shining sea. This time I'll call on our Commission Chaplain Romell McMurray to lead us in our prayer and our pledge.
Let us pray, please. Most gracious and all wise God, thank you for this beautiful day that you've allowed us all to see. Let us be reminded that someone overnight did not make it and we're forever grateful that you've allowed us to be here. I ask that you be with us in this meeting within this chamber this morning. Give us all the wisdom to make the best decisions that you see fit for everyone. I'm grateful for the unity and the collaboration that we've all had over the past few months to ensure that we've taken care of the needs of those that we serve. There are times when everyone may not see eye to eye, but at the end of the day, we all know and do what's best for all of Rutherford County. I ask that you continue to bless our cities, our county, and our state and our country.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner James?
Here.
Give us, the leaders of our county, the vision to go in the way that you want us to go.
Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Commissioner Anthony Johnson?
Present.
Commissioner Boyd?
Here.
For we know that the Bible says that the Lord tells us to write the vision and to make
Commissioner Paul Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Irvin?
Here.
Commissioner Harris?
it a plane upon the tables that you may run.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd?
Here.
Chairman Phillips?
So for that, we want to say thank you.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Here.
I ask that we seek your vision and not our own.
Commissioner McMurray?
Here.
Commissioner Gooch?
Here.
Commissioner Sherrino?
As always, continue to bless and watch over those that protect and serve this country
Yeah.
Twenty-one present.
Thank you, Lisa. This time I'll call on our Chairman Pro Tem Trey Gooch for the reading and the approval
and our county. Lastly, as I close this prayer, I hope that we'll all continue to serve our constituents
of our last meeting minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed those minutes, among others, find them to be appropriate, move that we
more and become better volunteers within our communities.
dispense with the reading and approve the minutes as presented.
It's in your name that we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
all. Light stars in the field of blue, God keep me strong and ever true; it is with pride
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. This time, I'm gonna alleviate from our commission agenda just a little bit.
and love that we salute my ten seat.
Thank you. You may be seated. Call on our Rutherford County Clerk Lisa Crowell of Caldero, please, Lisa. Carla, Rachel, come up here if you would, please. You guys can stand in front of the podium and face the firing squad.
Present.
Mr. Piercey?
Here.
Commissioner Rather?
Here.
Commissioner P?
Here.
Commissioner Davison?
Here.
Commissioner Beverly?
Here.
Commissioner Kusch?
Thank you. I asked these two ladies to join us this morning, and I'd just like to issue them a special shout-out and a special thanks for supporting us as a commission for this entire year. And I dare say that there's not a one of us that haven't asked them for something this past year. And a lot of us have asked them for a lot more than one something this past year, and they have never failed to deliver. We would not be as successful as we are without their help and their support. So I just wanted us to thank them in a very public manner, and also, we appreciate the Mayor's Office for supporting this commission as well. Carla, Rachel, thank you for a job well done.
No, thank you. We gotta get to work.
That is. Also, at this time, I'll call on our Commissioner Pettis Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask at this time that the Rutherford County Leadership Committee, if I think they're back here in this area, if you would, please stand up. Commissioners, I'd like for you to turn around and take a look at this group right here. This is the group that fed you this morning, provided your breakfast. But I want to introduce them to you. They've been doing this for several years. They've been coming up here, getting here quite early before you have, to provide your breakfast. And these are the people that are in Rutherford County, that are part of our farming community. This is now called the Rutherford County Leadership Committee. We have with us Doris Ann Fitz, who is a Farm Bureau Secretary. If you're ever coming to that office down there, you'll see Doris Ann. She does a lot of things there for Farm Bureau and very involved. Stacy Fuller, right there. Lynn Davis. Charlotte P., who is also the chairman of this committee. She also serves on our property, our planning commission. She's also on our steering committee for our comprehensive plan, does an outstanding job there, too. Phyllis Ferguson, right back here. Phyllis has a daughter up in the University of Tennessee that's very involved, especially today. I guess she's very excited. She's also just been appointed to a very important position with the Shorthorn Association. It's something that is a high position that, just like a lot of things in agriculture, she's worked very hard for, and I think we're very proud of what her daughter has done there. Phyllis also works with the Tennessee pork producers across the state of Tennessee. Trey Smith, President of Rutherford County Farm Bureau. Very important man, is we want to talk to every now and then, dealing with legislation here within this county and within the state at different times. And Marilyn Morgan, Marilyn's right back here. So this committee has been a part of us today. They've taken care of us, they have fed us. So ladies and gentlemen, I want you to say thank you to this group.
We have one person to sign up for public comments this morning. First Lieutenant William Boyd. His topic is illegal immigration. Lieutenant Boyd, are you here? Moving on. Item F, elections and confirmation. Call on our Steering Vice Chair Pettis Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, you have on your iPads a list of notaries that we need to look at this morning. It is a shorter list than usual. I'll give you just a few minutes to look at those because they have just appeared on your iPad this morning due to the time limit that we had as far as bringing things to the SharePoint to get these things done. I'll give you just a minute or two to look over those. If you've had time to see those, if...
Motion to approve. We have a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman. Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the election of our notaries. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this concludes the business of elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Item G, resolution to approve the consent agenda. Call on our Chairman Pro Tem Trey Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a request, Mr. Chairman, to move item number seven to the budget report. So that would, I'm moving item number seven to J1C in the current C and D to D and E. So save item number seven, motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve our consent agenda and a second.
Mr. Chairman.
With, yes, sorry, Commissioner Oliver.
I have about eight questions, and I was asking if we could look at these things individually. Since the last budget meeting, there are several questions that I have. So I think it would be due diligence on our part to look at these and answer questions that have come from citizens.
Are they particular to our consent agenda?
Yes.
Do they deal with all of the items? Take your time, Commissioner Oliver. We're in no big hurry this morning. Take your time.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Commissioner P.
If it would be okay, could kind of speak to a couple of things that I know Commissioner Oliver may be interested in. I may call on our Finance Director. One thing is, the library system has been brought up. I want to make it clear that we are funding Lineball Public Library at the exact same level we did last year. There's been no reduction whatsoever in this budget. It is the exact same figure that they got last year. Okay? The other thing is the school funding, and Michael, I'm gonna call on you if you don't mind. As far as what the school system asks for, we have actually given them more in this budget than what they requested. There has been no reduction in what they asked for. Michael, if you want to elaborate on that?
Sure, sure, Chairman. We are actually, on April 18th, was the School Board's first initial meeting on their fund 143, 177, and 141. But specifically around 177, I think there was a couple of questions about that. The original request at that meeting was between 16 and 18 million dollars. Eighteen million is what they got, and I'm rounding to the nearest 100,000 here. Eighteen million is what they got last year in 177 for the budget, and it was between 16 and 18, and I say that because we reduced based on an estimate for the school facilities tax. Then the School Board met on May 9th, and at the request of the County Finance Office, we asked them to revise that up. I believe it was 19.7 off the top of my head that went to May 9th. And we did that because we were still in the shifting pennies around and still finalizing revenue estimates. And so it was a placeholder. And then when it came over here to the Joint Budget and Health and Ed Committees, it was revised. Health and Ed passed it as is, knowing there was going to be a revision at the Budget Committee, and it was revised down to 18.9. Now that's 900,000 roundabout over what they initially requested. And then initially, they also requested MOE, and I believe right at 480,000 is what we gave them over MOE. Now, all of this goes into a plan about how we're gonna have to shift some pennies next year as far as opening a new elementary school and stuff. And so we did this in conjunction with the Director of Schools in his office as kind of a long-term, five-year plan about how to fund the opening of a new school and still fund capital maintenance, because as the new increased school facilities tax comes online, it's gonna raise revenue in 177 as we shift back for operating cost. Hope that answers the question.
Commissioner Oliver.
Yes, thank you. I believe at the joint meeting that, no, I think it was a joint meeting, our meeting before the joint meeting maybe, I don't know. At any rate, I had asked the question, well, first of all, let me say this. Budget seems to get a more comprehensive report from the Board of Education than we do in Health and Ed, so let me point that out. But I remember asking the question about maintenance of effort where it looked like we were only maybe two over, 200,000 over? And I specifically remember asking that question, and then the numbers came back and looked a lot different. And so that was my concern, and those are my questions about those funding differences. Because I remember making the motion to approve because I thought it was just minimally above maintenance of effort, but now it seems like it's something different. So that's where my concern is.
I believe since I've seen it, and I'd have to check at the schools, I believe it's always been a little over 400. We did sure up some tax, some property tax pennies once we got the final assessment data from the Property Assessors Office. I don't remember it changing 200,000. It probably changed 15,000 or 20,000 up or down, but from everything I can remember from the start, I think it was 480, 470 at the start of that. Now, that sounds like a lot of money, but at the same time, their budget's 520 million plus, and so we don't want to run so tight on maintenance of effort there either. And it helped them plug a couple of things at the end of their budget, kind of helped both sides there. So we didn't want to run right to the penny. But the only thing that would have changed, to my knowledge, would have been 15,000 or 20,000 dollars on the property tax side. But it is about 480 now.
My other question was regarding what came out of budget about the libraries and the recommendation from...
Dan, yes.
So specifically, the library funding, just for the record, their library funded, funding was added back, and that'll be, that's really under item J1. It was D, I guess it got moved to E. But to clarify there, we were trying to work out something good for both sides, and so as part of adding that back, they were gonna reduce some of their fund balance and return it back to the cities and the counties. And so the original discussion between the Library Board and the cities and counties, and the county, was that they would return it at the end of the year. However, if something happened with that entity and that would put us into the next budget year, they've agreed to, as we fund them on a quarterly basis, they've agreed to refund us on a quarterly basis. So in my example, if we were to write them a check on September 30th, in theory, on October 1, they're gonna write us a check for 25% of what they were gonna refund us in total. And that way, it's fair on both sides. Nobody's out, nobody's waiting on the other a long period of time. And so that was the only clarification that came about at budget.
I believe my other questions regarding the public safety building have already been moved off of the consent agenda. Thank you.
So we're good with the consent agenda, Commissioner Oliver, with the exception of item seven? Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve our consent agenda with the exception of item seven, which will be moved to the budget report. Any questions or comments? For this, we'll be on the board. If you would, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one, yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. We have no public hearings scheduled today. I see Doug Demossi back here. Doug, you have any reports or anything you need to update on? Very good, thank you. Getting our standing reports, I'm going to move the budget item from the first down to the last, and we'll take care of other business first. So we'll get right into our Public Safety Committee report. Chairman Pettis Reed.
The only thing that we would have to report is that we're getting ready to have an opening of another public health and safety building coming up in July. Just to remind the Commissioners that we'll start running fire and ambulance out of there the 1st of July, but we'll have a flag raising there. We're looking at the date of July 14th of having that. That will be a Sunday, and we will send notification out to everyone to let you know when that will be. So we're excited. This will make our fourth one, so we will be glad to let everybody know when that will be. But our next meeting will be Monday, July 22nd.
Thank you, Chairman Reed.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Mayor Carr.
I'm getting my Chief of Staff, Mr. Hennessy, standing up, saying that the information may not be exactly correct, so I'm not sure what he's referring to, Commissioner Reed. I want to make sure we, the information...
...out of session, Mr. Hennessy.
Thank you.
Just to let you know, we were discussing that this morning, so we are still contacting people about the exact opening date. So he was calling people as I was up here, so we're still waiting on working on those dates.
Yes, and that's correct. We did talk about the 14th, but unfortunately, Ms. Lisa Kay is going to be out of town that day, and so if it's okay, we were looking at the 21st.
Thank you, Mr. Hennessy.
But that said, then the flag raising will be on the 21st.
Which location is that? Which public safety building are we talking about? Walter Hill. Item J3, Health and Education Committee Chairman Phil Dodd.
Thank you, Chairman. No report. Our next meeting is scheduled for July 23rd, 5:30 PM, in these chambers.
Chairman. J4, Property Management Committee Chairman Alan McAdoo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next meeting will be June 27th at 5:30, but we have a tour, a tour, and we will be meeting at the Rutherford County Nursing Home at 3:30. At the nursing home at 3:30. Anyone that's not on the committee is welcome to come, and we've been trying to tour out there for, I think, about six months, so we definitely got that one on. Also, on the Plainview Public Safety Building, once budget gives their report, property management will be amending that motion. Amending that motion, reason being because there's a lot of information that was done in budget that wasn't even presented to property management, and we think that it should've came through us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman McAdoo. Item J5, Public Works and Planning Chairman Anthony Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will not have a Public Works meeting in July. August 6th will be our next meeting. It's August 6th.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item J6, Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee Chairman Craig Harris.
Mr. Chairman, we do not have a meeting in July. We will meet at August 5th, and we will be discussing certain things with the upcoming law that just passed on our school facilities tax. So I'll have a lot of information for that, and we should be able to address that in August.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item J1, Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee. This is what we're here for. Chairman Robert P.
Well, good morning. I've got about 50 pages here to read, so y'all can settle in. Actually, I've talked to our attorney, and we're gonna be able to size that down, hopefully. I'm gonna start off and make sure that we have one added, right? We're gonna address that one last?
Yes.
Okay. Just make sure I've got that right. Okay. Budget item A, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that this centralized cafeteria fund be amended according to the schedule attached here to as Exhibit 1 and Incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim resolved this 24th day of June 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
What this is, is they're actually moving 1,241,053 to the cafeteria fund. We have their representatives here, or our chairman can explain it if there's any questions.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll be on the board. If you would, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one, yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Item B, and before I get into this, I want to repeat what Chairman McAdoo said. At budget, we were given a different figure, which is basically a quarter of a million dollars higher than the amount that Chairman McAdoo's group and property management saw. And after this resolution is read, voted on, what I'd like to do is offer a motion instead of amending it. And the reason I'm not trying to amend it, we have subcontractors that had put in bids. They may be available, they may not be, but basically, I'll offer a motion, and Chairman McAdoo may change that motion, but anyway, whatever he wants to do, basically, it'll go back to his committee. But if we go ahead and pass this, this will not hold up us building the Plainview Station. It's the full funded amount that came to budget from the PBA. Resolution, whereas the Rutherford County entered into an agreement with the Public Building Authority of Rutherford County, the PBA, for the design, construction, and furnishing of the Christiana and Del Webb Public Health and Safety Buildings in August of 2022, and whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners moved the site from Christiana to Plainview in August of 2023, and whereas the PBA has obtained the guaranteed maximum price from American Constructors for construction of the Plainview Public Health and Safety Building of 8,783,648, and whereas the total cost with the design and furnishing is 9,482,509. And whereas the funding for the Plainview Public Health and Safety Building will be from previously allocated funds, plus 1,997,924 moved from the Del Webb Building, and any savings obtained from the Walter Hill and Lankasses Public Health and Safety Buildings to expend the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the guaranteed maximum price of 8,783,648 from American Constructors for the Plainview Public Health and Safety Building be approved, and be it further resolved that the total cost of the Plainview Public Health and Safety Building is 9,482,509 with funding as aforementioned, resolved this 24th day of June 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
First motion. And a second. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make an amendment to his motion that the PBA report back to property management committee about these added expenditures, and also bring a detailed report so property management can look at the entire project and find ways and means to reduce the cost on Plainview. If we keep going this way, the public safety building is gonna really run out the roof on funding, and then we'll be looking at different ways to fund these projects. But they really need to come through the proper committee so we can look at these expenditures and have a way to maybe reduce it in the committee before it go to budget. So that's my amendment to the motion.
We have an amendment to the motion. Second. And a second. Now discussion on the amendment. Try to get some clarification. There have been some discussion over the past week as it related to subcontractors and bids that could be considerably lower than that, and that's what the Property Management Committee is asking us for permission for them to look at. So we're not holding up the funding of this, but...
First motion. And a second. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make an amendment to his motion that the PBA report back to property management committee about these added expenditures, and also bring a detailed report, so property management can look at the entire project and find ways and means to reduce the cost on Plainview. If we keep going this way, the public safety building is going to really run out the roof on funding, and then we'll be looking at different ways to fund these projects. But they really need to come through the proper committee, so we can look at these expenditures and have a way to maybe reduce it in the committee before it go to budget. So that's my amendment to the motion.
We have an amendment to the motion.
Second.
And a second. Now discussion on the amendment. Try to get some clarification. There have been some discussion over the past week as it related to subcontractors and bids that could be considerably lower than that, and that's what the property management committee is asking us for permission for them to look at. So we're not holding up the funding of this, but they will be looking at options from subcontractor perspective to reduce the total cost of that building. Clear? This will be on the board. If you would, please cast your vote. We're voting on the amendment at this particular time, the amendment that Chairman McAdoo just made. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
21 yes.
The amendment passes. This time, we'll be voting on the motion as amended. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner James.
I wanted to follow up, seeing this funds coming out of the Del Webb. I wanted to see what is left in the Del Webb.
Let Mike answer that.
So this has 1.9 million moving from Del Webb. I don't think we will need that much because this does not include some savings from Laskasses and Walter Hill, but we have not received the final pay app on those yet. I believe those anticipated savings are around $800,000 to $900,000 for both of those buildings combined, returned from the contingency of the American Constructors. So with that said, right now, after we do all this moving, there would be about $2.5 to $2.6 million, but I think that could go up, you know, maybe another $700,000 to $1 million once we get all the savings back from the Laskasses and Walter Hill.
I just, I'm thinking, I'm finding it interesting. About 18 months ago, I made an amendment to, in a timely manner, put the money back into Del Webb. We originally took out for Christiana, now Plainview, and now we're kind of robbing the piggy bank again. That's kind of where my mind was going. So I'm just trying to see what is left and what we really have for that one, if that one will even materialize at this point. That's all, that's my question.
Other questions? Oliver.
Yes, I had a question too, because in the budget meeting, Mayor Carr made mention of possibly Del Webb being off the table because of something Smyrna may be doing. Can we get some clarity on that?
Yes. I didn't say, I did not say it was off the table, Commissioner. What I said is because of Smyrna extending sewer Don Almaville Road to our, to our current Almaville Volunteer Fire Department location, we are now stepping back and reviewing, do we move the Del Webb location from 96 East to the location where we currently have an Almaville Volunteer Fire Department. And so because the funding for that facility is going to be delayed just a little bit, it may be a better situation for us to relocate Del Webb to Almaville Road.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the clarification. Since Del Webb is currently in my district, I've gotten some feedback and pushback from constituents in that area that's really wanting that to stay there if possible, especially due with Del Webb coming in with 1,100 homes and, you know, Royal Glen and a lot of those areas. So if we could, you know, possibly just keep it there, keep it on the table, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Absolutely. There's been no decision made. We're just trying to make sure that wherever we locate this sixth public safety building, it is in the best location as it relates to the other public safety buildings we have in the county, and like you, like you referenced in your remarks, the growth that the county is receiving on the west end of the county. So there's been no decision, and that decision, when the mayor brings a recommendation, it'll bring to be to this body for full discussion.
Follow up, Mr. Mayor, if I may, Chairman. Just along that thought, I'm curious to know if you're looking at the potential of moving it to the Almaville area. I'd like to kind of be more informed as that decision comes online and so forth, what's going on with that, if you wouldn't mind. I'm not, I'm not assuming you wouldn't. But I'm concerned because I was there in the board meeting when you and the chief mentioned to them, to the volunteers out there, that there is no intention of coming out that way. So now we're hearing this, so I'm just kind of wanting to see how we're going to merge when we get down there, get closer to that.
Thank you for that. But that is, that, I want to make sure we're exactly correct in my language. We never said we were never coming out that way. What we said was, we were never going to get rid of that volunteer fire department as long as it was effective in its ability to service that community. So what we're saying is not mutually exclusive. Our charge is to make sure that this county provides the best comprehensive public safety service to its citizens that we possibly can. We're waiting on the sewer line to be extended before we make any determination as to whether that location, that sixth location is Highway 96 East at the current Del Webb location, or at the Almaville, or maybe some other location. But we have options, and this commission will make that determination with the mayor, with a mayor's recommendation.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Just make one particular comment. This discussion is healthy for the county. When we make decisions, we want to make sure that we're making decisions that are in the long-term best interest of Rutherford County as a whole. So this particular type of questioning and us looking forward is healthy for the commission. Whether or not it happens in one particular place or the other, it's in the best interest of our county to make sure that when we build and we put concrete together, that it's in, once again, the long-term best interest of the county. So thank you for that discussion. Any other discussion? For this, we have a motion and a second for Item J1B. This will be on the board, and this is the motion as amended. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
20 yes, 1 no.
Motion passes. Thank you. Chairman P.
At this time, instead of going on to the next, we're going to drop back and pick up the resolution that was pulled from the consent agenda, and hopefully I've got the right one. Item 7, General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments.
Yes, that's correct.
And I'll go ahead and read the amendment, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that your general purpose school fund be amended according to the schedule attached hereto as Exhibit 1 and Incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim resolved this 24th day of June 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move. And you have the attached months of the expenditures on your iPads.
I'll second the motion.
You have a motion and a second. Now discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Oliver.
I will say, after looking at this, this is not really the one that I wanted to talk about. Just because of the way it was listed, I'm more concerned about the 8.1 million amendment, but we've already done something about it.
That is this one. This item has two budget amendments included in it.
Okay, I only see the 1.241.
The next page. If you're, if you're looking at, if you're looking on the consent agenda, if you scroll down, or scroll over.
There we go. We got it. Thank you. Oh, so my question was, in budget, there was an explanation about how this was going to be funded that I was unclear about. There was some mention about TISA funding, different things that the board attorney spoke about in his presentation. So I just wanted some clarification.
So specifically on the amendment that involves the additional 8.1, almost 8.2 million dollars of TISA funding. So on that amendment, that money is coming from their fast growth money and from their outcomes funding. I do not know specifically what outcomes they hit, but I'm, it's those two, the pots that it's coming from out of TISA. Now, just as a reminder, outcomes funding, the school board does not know what that is at the start of the year. You know, that's going to be from things like test scores and things like that that they get. And then fast growth, they don't, they will not get that estimate upfront because they don't know how fast they're going to grow, obviously. So anyways, that's what the 8.1 million dollars, it's a revenue coming in. You'll see that at the top of that page. And then also combined with that, just like the county does, they're cleaning up their, their expense line items, so they're reducing some and increasing some. But the majority of that 8.1 million is going into medical insurance. You'll see an increase of $3 million, kind of right there towards the top of the page. It's going to be line 711-11207. But the reason that's going up is the board voted mid, I think it was mid year last year to absorb the medical insurance increase from the state of Tennessee and not to pass that on to their employees. And so they're funding that with additional TISA dollars. And then the other majority of that's going for, I believe it was hard to fill stipends, and you'll see that as part of the 4.2 million dollar increase in 711-116 at the top. And almost everything else in that budget amendment is moving, shifting expenditures, decreases and increases based on where they thought they might have overages or under, you know, be under budget. To get specific on that, we'd have to ask Ryan Runyon as far as if there was a specific line item like special education or something, but that's what the 8.1 million is. The majority is going for is those two things right there.
Thank you. And that was a question I had about the hard to fund stipends. Are we in a position where we don't have to do stipends anymore? Is that what they're saying?
That was, that'd be a question for them for the specifics, but I believe they told budget the other night that they, that would, they would not be doing that next year. But as far as why, you would, you would have to ask the school board.
So what, I'm supposed to wait till the next health and ed meeting to ask them that? I could do that if I need to.
We can actually ask for suspension of the rules and ask for Superintendent Sullivan and Mr. Runyon, I say here, if you want to ask that question.
Well, I'd appreciate that, yes. I move for a suspension of the rules to have them come forth.
I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Sullivan, Mr. Runyon. Do you understand?
Yeah, I do.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, good morning. Specifically about the hard to staff. So for the last two years, we have had hard to staff schools. We've had off and on, Laverne Middle School, Laverne High School, Roy Waldron, Blackman Elementary. What we have found is that that has a huge expenditure, and unfortunately, we are still not, it's not working to what we would hope it would. So while we're continuing to throw three to four million dollars at the problem, the problem is, is not necessarily money in that situation. And so we are working as a staff to support academics so that we can work with our teachers there. They are still Title I schools, and so that is a huge extra increase that they get as well. It just wasn't something that was sustainable for us. And for us, when we looked at as a school system, even on the north end, I have Laverne Lake and Cedar Grove are very similar to some schools, and teachers are asking, how come I'm not getting that hard to staff bonus compared to that? So it just didn't, when we were looking at as a school system, it wasn't equitable, and it wasn't also something that we could continue indefinitely in finding a way to fund.
So these schools on the north end are still hard to staff?
Yes, ma'am, they are.
And you're, and the stipend was not helping, is what you're saying?
It was not, no, ma'am. Not to the level that we were hoping. Do we believe some people came strictly for that stipend? Absolutely. That would be incorrect for me to say that nobody did, but we still had openings in those schools with the stipend still being there.
Other questions for Superintendent Sullivan?
Mr. Chairman. On this one, and this might be, you might have to explain, similarly explained the other night, but this is, might be more procedural. The other night during budget, when I watched it back on the, on our channel, this motion died essentially for lack of a better motion. And then it was somewhat explained, and I'd like, that's where I'd like you to kind of re-explain, where it's going to happen whether we vote or not. So my question on the procedure side is, are we, is it just a formality for us? And for your side, is it, how is it essentially going to happen regardless?
So I want to clarify, there's a couple of things that will happen regardless, not, not everything. The 8.1 million dollars is coming regardless from the state of Tennessee for TISA, because that's not a grant we apply for. It's funding the state sends us, so it is coming regardless whether we amend that revenue line item or not. The second thing is bar me stopping payroll, which I don't think this body would want me to do. We would pay those, we've already paid, or the board has already paid those hard to fill stipends. They did that, and the board approved the additional insurance, knowing there was additional TISA funding coming. They did not know the exact dollar amount at the time that they approved those hard to fill stipends and the insurance adjustment. So that has already been paid. So the only option would be, one, we stop insurance payments, which I don't think this body want me to do, or we make them anyways, and we would go over budget and get a finding from the state comptroller's office. So I think, just to clarify, that's what would happen if this did not pass. The 8.1 would still come, and then we, my office would be left with two options, which is, one, to go over budget in those insurance and that salary line item, or two, to stop that and stop payroll for the months of July and August. And so I think those would be the, the two options there.
So we're essentially stuck because the, the school board preset that, prepaid that now, and now we don't have a choice but to pay it to keep it from going. Is that what you're saying?
Well, there's some other things too, because at the end of the year, just like on the county side, in that 711-116 line item, we never know, just like on the county side, how many people are going to retire. Their number just is higher than us because they have more employees. So one of the things that every government and local government that I know of in Tennessee does, whether it's city or county, comes through an amends at the end of the year for leave payouts. And now we estimate what we think that might be at the end of the year and make sure we think we have enough revenue. But for example, if you've got a 30-year employee with a decent salary that's got a leave payout of 30 days or 20 days, that, that's a big chunk of money, and you, you take that over the thousands of teachers we have, generally those leave payouts are going to be in that, in that 116 line item at the top. And so we're obligated to pay those out regardless of what the budget says, because we owe them that money. And so part of this 4.2 is going to take care of a lot of that. But you think about that over, I believe y'all have five or 6,000 employees off the top of my head?
We're closer to seven.
Seven. So the number isn't as large, and then if you think about it, if you look at the line item here, that, that line item is $190 million, and so that's kind of like on the county side, when we amended a several hundred thousand, we'll amend a line item of 700,000. That's kind of the equivalent here. Their numbers are just larger. But on the insurance side, that's what the board voted on, and so that's kind of the option we're left with.
And I'll add, when the board voted to do that on the insurance, that was in October. So this is something for all commissioners to know. As Mr. Smith said, we do not budget our direct funding. And so that is something that as long as I'm the director, we're not going to budget. That is an extra, hopefully, four to five million dollars every year. We don't know how many kids were proficient on TCAP, what their ACT scores were. We don't get that funding from the state until December or January. It would be financially irresponsible for me to budget that funding not knowing what it's going to be. So in October, when our board asked, can we absorb this, just like the county this year, I believe, is doing a 5% overall raise, we're doing only two and a half because we put more into our insurance last year. And we talked about that in October of, we're only going to do, we'll have to lower our raise if we are covering more of the insurance premiums this year, which is what we did. And so in October, we had that conversation around our fast growth should be four to five. If we're okay with doing a lower percentage raise and accepting we're covering more insurance, then that is the board's will, and that's what they chose to do.
Other questions or comments? Ready to vote? We have a motion and a second. Where are we?
We're ready to vote on the motion as amended. Got it?
I'm sorry, I'm back on.
Me too. So we've already voted. These were just additional questions. We haven't voted yet. I'm sorry. Thank you. Got lost. So once again, we have a motion and a second, and we've had discussion on Item J.
Mr. Chairman.
1B. Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Oliver.
Yes, I think we need to come back in session.
I'm sorry?
I think we need to come back in session. Did you call us back into session? It was suspended, wasn't it?
Yes. We're back into session. Now, once again, we have a motion and a second to approve Item J1B as amended. For this, we will be on the board, so please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
21 yes, I mean, 20 yes, one no.
Motion passes. Chairman P.
Okay, we're back on our regular schedule there. Budget item C, a resolution authorizing the tax levy in Rutherford County, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July the 1st, 2024. Section 1 be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, assembled in regular session on the 24th day of June, 2024, that the combined property tax rate for Rutherford County, Tennessee, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, shall be $1.8762 on each $100 of taxable property, which is to provide revenue for each of the following funds and otherwise conform to the following levies. And I'll list the funds and the rates. County General, .7160 cents. Ambulance Service Fund, .069 cents. The Highway Fund, .0072 cents. General Purpose Schools, .5727 cents. Education Capital Projects Fund, .1140 cents. Debt Service Fund, .3973 cents, for a total of $1.8762. Section 2 be it further resolved that there is hereby levied a gross receipts tax as provided by law. The proceeds of the gross receipts tax herein levied shall accrue to the above funds in a pro-rated basis. Section 3 be it resolved, further resolved, that the county's situs portion of the sales tax revenue will be divided as follows. Solid Waste Sanitation Fund, 60%. General Fund, 20%. Road and Bridge Fund, 20%. Section 4 be it further resolved that the wheel tax revenue be divided as follows. General Fund, 30%. Road and Bridge Fund, 30%. General Purpose School Fund, 40%. Section 5 be it further resolved that the school facilities tax revenue be divided as follows. Education Capital Projects Fund, 50%, and General Debt Service Fund, 50%. Section 6 be it further resolved that the interest earned on the idle operating balances, with the exception of the Special Purpose Fund and the Drug Control Fund and the Centralized Cafeteria, Cafeteria Fund be distributed as follows. General Fund, 61%. General Purpose School Fund, 20%. Road and Bridge Fund, 4%. General Debt Service, 15%. Provided that the Finance Director will monitor General Purpose School Fund and Highway Fund, available cash balances and interest rates to determine that the above allocation is justifiable. Section 7 be it further resolved that the delinquent county property taxes for the year 2023 and the prior years and the interest and penalties hereon collection during the ending June 30th, 2025, shall be appropriated to the various county funds according to the subdivision of the tax levy for the year 2024. The clerk and master and the trustee are hereby authorized and directed to make such appropriations accordingly. Section 8 be it further resolved that notwithstanding the allocations to certain funds set forth in Section 1 and Section 7, and taxes paid with respect to property that is subject to the terms of the contribution agreement, the Industrial Development Board of Rutherford County, approved by the county on the 12th day of December, 2019, shall be deposited exclusively to the County General Fund at the full rate, $1.8762 on each $100 of taxable property. The clerk and master and the trustee are hereby authorized and directed to make such appropriate apportionments accordingly. Section 9 be it further resolved that all resolutions of the Board of the Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, which are in conflict with this resolution are hereby repealed. Section 10 be it further resolved that the resolution shall take effect from and on its passage, the public welfare requiring it, this resolution shall be spread upon the minutes of the Board of Commissioners, resolved this 24th day of June, 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second to approve tax levy, levy resolution. Now discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. James.
I'd like to make amendment, like to make amendment, I'd like to, you know, I propose moving $40,000 out of the, with the, with general fund or on the signed fund balance.
If you want, if you're trying to amend the general fund budget or a budget, that would be item now E.
Excuse me, am I off here? I don't have an E on my.
Well, it, it got moved to E after the consent agenda, they added J1C and shifted the tax levy to item D and shifted the appropriations resolution to item E. No, it, it just got shifted when the consent agenda got pulled off.
Okay, I see what you're saying, I got you. Thank you.
No amendment? Commissioner James, very good. Other discussion. Once again, we have a, first, we have a motion and a second to approve item J1C, the 2024-25 Tax Levy Resolution. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
21 yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
There's about 10 pages or so on there. I'm only going to read the first paragraph, and just so you know at home, this is all available online. Commissioners, you've got it in front of you on your iPads. Basically, it will break down where the money is being spent, item by item. A resolution make appropriations for the various funds, departments, institutions, offices and agencies of Rutherford County, Tennessee, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024 and ending June 30th, 2025. Section 1 be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners on the 24th day of June, 2024, that the amount, amounts hereafter set are hereby appropriated for the purpose of meeting the expenses of various funds, departments, institutions, offices and agencies of Rutherford County, Tennessee, for the capital outlay and for meeting the payment of principal and interest on the county's debts maturing during the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024 and ending June 30th, 2025, according to the following attached schedules, and as I said, you have that in front of you, resolved this 24th day of June, 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. James.
I believe this is the one I'm looking for. The, I'm wanting to move, I want to make amendment on this one, to move $40,000 out of miscellaneouss, and move it into line item 3, 399. It's 399. You got that? Which is the other contracted services for rural fire protection.
Do you know, do you know where you would like it to come out of miscellaneouss? And I'll list them, because they're not going to be listed on the appropriations resolution, but there is a gasoline pooled amount for 100,000. There is judgments, which is where we fund our self-insurance fund of 1.2 million dollars. There's trustees, commissions of 3 million that we are obligated to pay regardless, and then we have 100,000 that we, the budget committee has set aside for matching grants.
Where in the book?
It should be in the very last page probably of the general fund.
Actually, I believe I had it split from 10 from 599, 20 from 510, and another 10 from 505.
So it, if, I'll make a recommendation, if you would like to do that, I would highly recommend it, it just come out of 599. The other ones, like I said, trustees, commission, we're obligated to pay, and for judgments going to our self-insurance fund, we really need to keep that money as funding our 263 fund.
Okay, I'm good with that. 599.
Your amendment is to move, what, $40,000?
I can, you want me to restate it?
Please do.
For you. So I believe, if I'm understanding you correctly, your amendment would move $40,000 from line item 589599, which that's the miscellaneous category on your iPad, and you would like to move that to 54320399, which is the rural fire protection, and specifically that line item funds the volunteer fire departments, and I believe we still fund three of them.
Yes, and the, the further that amendment, it's to break down with, currently they're funded at 80 each. With this, with this amendment, it will bring Christiana to 80, it will keep, bring Eagleville up to 90, and it will bring Amleville up to 110. And the reason for these number adjustments is the previous budget is the same they got last year, and looking at the number of calls they've made, being dispatched to, for example, Eagleville does 50% of their calls is outside of their area of scope. Amleville, 80% of their calls is outside of area of scope. So if we were to, to pay that extra difference, that does bring Eagleville to 90, and that brings Amleville to 144. But we can't, I'm not willing to go that high, so I wanted to try to get them to 110 to mediate their cost for the wear and tear on their equipment, their fuel cost, et cetera, as we go in, and we know we're going to keep calling them like we do. So that is my amendment, to move those, that number, $40,000 from those, from line 599 to line 399, in that breakdown. 80 for Christiana, 110 for Amleville, and 90 for Eagleville.
We have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Now discussion.
I have a question.
Mr. Chairman. Yes.
What was the original timeline? I guess we were hoping to build Dell Webb and when this was passed with American Recovery Act funds, when were we hoping Dell Webb would be operational? I understand we've had, we might have experienced some delays.
Mary, if you could answer that, please.
Yeah, I'm not sure I heard the commissioner's question, he didn't have the microphone to his mouth, but I think what she said is, when did we expect Dell Webb to be operational? Is that right?
I believe that was prior to you and I's term, actually.
I'm sorry?
It was prior to you and I's term. When were we expecting Dell Webb to be built and operational versus in the grand scheme when we got these funds and we planned the five public safety buildings, and then where we are now, is what I'm trying.
So as, yes, you're right, it did span two different terms, Commissioner. So the original appropriation from the ARPA money was for the public safety buildings of Rockvale, Kittrel, Walter Hill, Last Cassis, Christiana, Plainview. Those were to be fully funded. Originally, this, there were, there was a sixth that was to be partially funded with the ARPA money. Because of inflation costs to the public safety buildings, originally these were costed around six and a half, six and a half million dollars. We're now at 8.5 million dollars and climbing. And so obviously, that had some adverse impact on the funding of the latter public safety buildings. My understanding, and Michael can speak to this, is that we have fully funded Rockvale, Kittrel, Walter Hill and Last Cassis with the ARPA money, and partially funded Plainview, which is, used to be Christiana with ARPA money, and with the rest of the money coming from what was to be Dell Webb. So all of Dell Webb will be funded by the commission through an appropriation. And as such, that is, when it becomes operational, is when this body determines where it's going to be located and at what point we want to fund that facility. We also, I might add, having talked to Chief Farley and Mr. Gaither, we are in some serious growing pains, and it's the consensus among the first responders that we could use probably a year or two pause on expansion just because of the growth of personnel, and we probably, the, the timing of this is suitable for waiting on the Amleville, potentially Amleville Silver Department. So operational is probably two years out.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was my question, and it kind of, I felt fed into what he was saying. I could see the benefit, they're getting inflationary costs, we're now looking at, it's going to be two years, potentially longer. Their call volume is increasing, their volume of calls outside of their service area is increasing, so I could see our cost increase, and therefore the increase here.
If I, if I could add, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The, the total call volume, as I understand it, and I wish Chief Farley were here, has not increased because of the public safety buildings that have come online, have reduced the call volume of the volunteer fire departments. It has not increased. It may be true that the call volume percentage has increased outside of the zone, that I can't speak to, but I do believe call volume for the volunteer fire departments is decreasing, not increasing, as we have brought these public safety buildings online.
James.
I agree with that, that potential, except that's more of a dispatch discussion, in my opinion. I'm looking at it, I was thinking, as you stated, with these buildings have increased in price through inflation, and just the affordability crisis we've got, so have our volunteers. We've got a two-year potential pause, plus at least a year build-out plan. So in, for my district, for my community, for our side of the county, we definitely need some, make sure we have a coverage, make sure they're fully funded to the best of ability. And $40,000 additional in this line feels like a very far cry when you compare just the cost, like, Michael, if you could give me an idea, what is the cost to operate one of our new buildings annually? And I know it's ARPA money, so it's without the, without the mortgage payment, so to speak.
Probably somewhere in the neighborhood of two to two and a half million dollars per year. I'm rounding off the top of my head.
Well, let's take the lower number, just to, so $2 million. We're talking about giving the last three volunteer departments between 80 and 110,000, where we're giving the rest of our departments up $2 million a year for an area that won't be covered if they can't afford to cover it. So I, I feel like the next two to three years, that, that added input, added value is a much greater need and a very good return on the money.
Other questions, other comments? McAdoo, then Commissioner Reed. Commissioner McAdoo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All the question I got from our commissioner, how did you come up with the 40,000, the breakdown? Because I'm not on those committees, and, and you were telling me 40,000, 10 here, 20 there, whatever, how did you come up with the breakdown? Is it 40,000 going to be enough, or do you foresee you need more in the future, or what? How did you come up with it?
I came up with the breakdown based on, throughout this last year, sitting on public safety, watching the dispatch numbers, talking with the different departments and so on, finding out that, for example, Eagleville, they, about 50% of their calls are, are
finding out that, for example, Eagleville, they, about 50% of their calls are being dispatched beyond the area of scope. So when you put that number in, they're, we're currently getting, they got 60 last year. So 50% of 60 is 30, plus 30, plus 60, $90,000. And that gives, that breaks it up to get them up to level. I'm sure they, they would need more. But that's how I kept it fair and reasonable for when we actually call them, to go beyond, not just what they're doing within the original agreed-upon area, but beyond. So with Amleville, they're about 80% beyond the area. Now, if I were to do that, Amleville would get about 164, or 144, I believe that was, it's $64,000 additional. But that, to me, felt that that was a little high. And I felt like the, this chamber wouldn't go that high. So to bring them down to a more realistic number, because when I talked to them, they were originally budgeting needing to request about 125. But I brought them down to 110 from going with them line by line, checking things out, saying 110 seems to be reasonable. I don't see a potential growth, additional adjustment to this for the next three years, minimal. This is surely based on our call volume that we put them up with, mixed with the inflation and affordability issues that we have. And just, I mean, unless we want to just do something drastic, like pay for their fuel. So this seems like the best approach. And the reason I left Christiana at the initial 80,000 is because they've been well with, with 80. They haven't asked or seen, heard anything from them about it. And this is their, their last year, if they make the last year, whenever Plainview comes online. It's very similar to the Last Cassis building. They might not finish out the last quarter. So we'll wait and see. But that kept it, where I've kept it equal across the board to where I need, and not just one round number for all three.
Just follow-up, Commissioner McAdoo.
Just briefly, a follow-up.
Yes.
You said the Eagleville voluntary, is the Rockvale, how far is the Rockvale Fire Department or whatever in that area? I guess Chairman Reed's going to talk on that. Because to me, if they need money in the future, you could come up here and ask for it, and we would allocate as needed. You know, just come up with a $40,000 figure. I'm just going to throw you $40,000 and just let you ride. Look like if, in the future, with us bringing on these public safety buildings and everything, if they needed more money or whatever, they would come to public safety, and we would allocate as needed. That's, that's the only thing I'm looking at.
Thank you, Commissioner McAdoo.
This is me responding to them coming up and asking. And this me, and even lowballing their ask.
Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As chairman of public safety, Mr. Chairman, first time I've heard of this. I, this hasn't come before me. It hasn't come before public safety. I had sort of wished that this had come before us, before the budget process. And I think that maybe if it had been bought before the budget process, this might have been something more understandable. I have no input to it. I have no reasoning. I haven't seen figures. I haven't seen anything to it. So I'm sort of left blind as what we do and how we go from there. So if something had been brought to the other six members of public safety to look at, and maybe do that to present to budget, it might have been a little different situation. But I'm sort of caught here, I guess, with proverbial rock in the hard place. What do I do as chairman of that committee, and how to do that? I totally understand that they may be in need of something of that type. But to sort of throw this on a budget committee that has spent hours, and what I would say almost days, doing this, and now we have just all in, just all in a morning, right here, trying to figure this out at this time, it's a difficult situation. And I think we would have gladly maybe looked at this at that time. And I'm sort of caught where, you know, I can't do it right now. I'd like to know more. I'd like to see more, and like to see more of what I've got to work with. And, and I just can't reach out here, pull this, and say, okay, that's what I need to do right now. And that's where I am.
Let me make a quick comment, if I could. This amendment is appropriate. But this amendment could be made at any time throughout the year, handled through our committee process. So it's not imperative that it be done today. It can be done at any time after our budget is adopted through the proper committee process. So it's not an improper motion. It can be moved on today. But if it's not, it can also be considered through the committee process at any time throughout the year. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to echo that. I would, in that, in that line of thinking, because any commission can bring a budget amendment, especially a nominal amount like this in the course of the year, I think it would be a good idea. At least I would like to have Chief Farley come before public safety, and maybe the budget and/or the full commission to make a determination on those funds. Because what we're talking about is just this fiscal year budget. We're not talking about a year from now, or two years from now, whatever. And so certainly $40,000 is something if the volunteer fire departments need, I would suppose this body would accept that, and we can, would make the proper budget amendment during the course of the year, like we have done heretofore. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Other questions or other comments? Commissioner Beverly.
Again, this is why I wanted to have this discussion. I, I'm not going to be voting for this for that same reason. Commissioner James, you see we have two members of the Public Safety Committee willing to discuss this. We meet in a month. Let's see if we can get the fire departments up here to say, hey, we need the X amount of dollars for this, this amount, or we need to pay this bill. That way, we have a little bit more knowledge, and we're not just kind of firing from the hip. I don't doubt there's a need. But I also think taking a breather for one month may not be a bad thing to better explain where we're going to spend this money. That, that's my reasoning behind it. But I agree with it in premise, and I think we're only a month shy.
Other questions? This time we'll be, we'll be voting on the amendment, on the amendment only, okay? So if you would, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Four yes, 17 no.
Amendment fails. We're back to the original motion. Any discussion on the original motion? This will also be on the board. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
20 yes, one no.
Item J 1 D passes. Commissioner P.
Thank you, guys. Especially, I want to thank our budget committee. I don't think they, they get enough regard and the hard work and time that they put in. Especially want to thank Chairman Harris, Commissioner Irving, Commissioner Paul Johnson, Commissioner Piercy, Chairman Goode, Commissioner Serino, for all your hard work. Also, our Assistant Director Mark Tucker, our Director Michael Smith, and our Mayor Joe Carr. Anyway, appreciate y'all, all the hard work, and the rest of the commissioners too, because y'all had to put up with us. I thank you. Our next regular scheduled meeting for budget is August the 8th at 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman P. Let me just kind of follow up and say I would second that and all the hard work that's been put in to this budget. And it was amazing process to go through.
I just want to publicly thank the Finance Department staff and the HR staff, specifically Mark in my office, could not have done it without him. And then specifically Sonia, as, we spent a lot of hours. We start this process back in January. And so I'd just like to publicly state, those two departments do a lot of heavy lifting on this, and I could not do it without them. So I just want to publicly thank them.
Shout-outs. Let me just kind of start it out by saying, your questions, your comments are always welcome. Do not ever feel embarrassed by your comments, your questions, because we all learn from them. Not only in this full commission meeting, but in our committee processes too. Once again, the questions that you ask, the clarifications that you need, educate all of us. So keep it up, and we'll all benefit from that. So thank you. Shout-outs.
Chairman Phillips.
Commissioner Rather.
Couple times tonight, or this morning, had a dream last night. I stood up in the commission meeting to approve the public safety minutes during a commission meeting. Because it's nine o'clock in the morning, it's kind of odd. But twice, two, three times tonight, we have kind of shouted out by standing up and applauding, which I think is great. I would like to do that for our mayor, Finance Department, budget people, Nick, whoever's involved in that. I think that needed a standing ovation. Can we do that?
Thank you, Commissioner Rather. Anyone else?
I've got one, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Beverly.
Lieutenant Peralta, I've got to give him a shout out. We've got a website, cleanupdistrict6.com to report illegal dumping, litter dumping out in the rural part of the county. And it's within 24 hours, he and his team normally have that cleaned up from the initial report. And I just want to thank him, the whole Workhouse Crew, and the folks out there that are putting that work in. It makes, keeps our community clean. So thank you very much, sir.
Amen. Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner James.
I'd just like to shout out to all of our residents here in Rutherford County. This is what this, this one's about. It's about the tax levy that we have to, to do in order to make this county government run on their behalf. And I want to give them the credit because they're paying the bill. And I really appreciate, even though they don't always see and understand where the money and why the money is going places, I want to just show a little respect to where it's coming from. Thank you.
Announcement on the picnic, Mayor?
Yeah, thank you very much. Nick was prompting me over here, so you must be reading mine. We have had over 350 RSVPs. And of course, this body is not only encouraged to attend, but if there was a way for the mayor's office to require you to attend, I would do that. But since I don't have that authority, I'm going to encourage you to attend. We're going to have a, a good time from 11:30 to 1:30 at the end of Landfield Road, on the construction site of our transfer station. So you'll get to see the work that's going on there. No, there is no smell of trash. No, you cannot see the trash. And yes, I think you'll enjoy some good barbecue from this flick pig and some good music. So I hope you can attend. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else? Commissioner Reed.
Just a reminder that the annual 4th of July picnic at Rockvale is again, and it is July 4th, when you have a annual 4th of July picnic. This is the oldest celebrated annual picnic in the state of Tennessee. So invite everybody to come out. It's from 10 to 2 at the community center there in Rockvale on Old Rockvale Road. Yeah, we got hit by the storm in May 8th. We lost about every tree that was on that old school grounds. But there's tents, there's bouncy houses, there's lots of food for everybody. But we invite everybody to come on out and be a part of it, and like to see you out there at this annual event.
Anyone else? Let me just say that our next scheduled meeting is August the 15th. But we have scheduled a work session, the first that this commission, the seated commission has, will experience. And that work session will be on July the 11th. It'll be a 6:00 PM meeting in conjunction with our planning commission at the Concrete Management Building at MTSU. And you'll get a little bit more information about that at the address and everything else. This is an important meeting, although we won't make decisions. We'll receive a lot of information that the planning department has been working on through their steering committee on Plan Rutherford. And we'll be educated as to what they've got in mind so we can move forward with that plan in the very near future. So July the 11th, 6:00 PM, MTSU Concrete Management Building. Anyone else? Once again, thank you for your presence, your time, your attendance, and happy birthday, America. We are adjourned.